Greetings. I'd like to call this meeting of the Saco City Council to order for Monday, March 7, 2022. Time is 6:30. Recognition of all members present. All the councilors are present with the exception of Council Archer, who was excused. I'd like to invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. Under Item 4 of the agenda on general, there are no items this week. Item 5, Committee Correspondence to Council. Any committee correspondents at this time? Counselor Purdy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Thursday, March 3, I attended the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting where they heard an appeal by Canamus Cured Dispensary LLC regarding the code enforcement officer's decision to deny them a building permit for 247 Main Street. I'm not going to go into the details of the legal arguments presented during the meeting. Simply wish to report to the council and anyone watching that the Zoning Board of Appeals voted to deny the appellant's administrative appeal with unanimous vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further committee correspondence? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I attended last Tuesday morning the Energy and Sustainability Committee meeting. The city will be undergoing upgrading of our streetlights to LEDs. That switch over will be citywide and will begin within a couple of weeks until all the lights within the city have been converted to LED.
Thank you. Any further committee correspondence to council? Moving on from Committee Correspondence to Council to Item 6 of the agenda, Public Comment. We have several folks that have signed up for Public Comment this evening. First up is Patrick and Veronica Labby, Four Woodman Ave. If you'd like to speak, please come forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and present your comments to council. If you'd like to, you can remove your mask during speaking.
My name's Patrick Labby. My wife, Veronica. I live at Four Woodman Avenue in Saco. I've been there for 35 years. We're trying to appeal the zoning line, which is at the, I guess, easily part of my property, which puts me in a business zone. All the other buildings on the Woodman Avenue are residential, and we'd like to be put into the residential zone. One of the reasons being that we'd like to be able to split the property. It's about an acre of land there, and with the zoning, the way it is, we don't have enough land to do it. There are two buildings on the property as now exist. So that's what we're trying to do. I brought survey plans and a letter of request to the planning board this morning, and spoke to Mr. Gunn via email and sent him the same thing. We don't know how things go anymore here. So, I mean, I worked for the city on planning board years ago. I'm under the understanding that it's going to go to planning board first, and then it goes to council. Before, I was understanding with the council first, and then planning board. So I guess I'm here to just let you know what I'm doing, pretty much, I guess. That's how you want to do it. All right? I don't know if you need any more additional information from me or not.
No, thank you. It's your time. If that's all you have to say, that's all you have to say.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Up next is Kelly Archer, 185 Bradley Street.
Hello, everyone. I'm Kelly Archer, 185 Bradley Street, Ward 5. And as a follow-up to my last Wednesday's email to the council concerning the unfinished business of appointment approval of Saco's first official city historian, I would like to let everyone know that Peter Scontress Yay is up in Old Town and University of Maine today, presenting the statue project to the indigenous stakeholders on behalf of the City of Bitterford and Bitterford Cultural Heritage Center. I hopefully look forward to him speaking about his initiative in front of this council in a future date. In regards to tonight's agenda items, I was pleased to see that the future land use map of the comp plan, page 81 of the packet, depicts the downtown growth area ends at the railroad tracks. I am very concerned about the follow-up from staff regarding the Ecology School left-hand turn lane with the consideration of MPI or BPI funding through MDOT or the city or taxpayers funding any part of this left-hand turn construction. The Ecology School Site Plan Amendments Condition of Approval Number 9 dated November 3, 2020, was clarified for the applicant, and by no means whatsoever does the amended language implicate or promise which the planning board cannot do or approve funding of this project by the city or state. They can only work with the applicant in the design and construction per ordinance. The contract agreement in amended site plan approval is solely based upon the applicant performing their due diligence and contractual obligations by implementing the traffic management solutions as warranted by the school's current programming or by May 1, 2022, whichever comes first. As we know, the August 12, 2021 Sewell peer review report stated that on July 22, 2021, the day camp tripped the NCHRP 457 warrant chart with this effective date of 8/12/21 notification being the effective date to the planning department to take action for the Ecology School's Contract Zone Amendment. I cannot find that this data was provided to the planning board for review in the last seven months. It is my understanding that this CZA is in violation of its agreement with the city as the design and construction of the left-hand turn lane process should have already been underway last summer at the expense of the Ecology School. I am also very concerned with the petition of the downtown dimensional standards from the minimum lot area dwelling unit from 1,500 to 650 square feet. The City of Saco at this moment in time is unique unto itself. Therefore, it cannot be compared to other communities until we have addressed the multitude of unfinished business, be it the school's water, traffic, infrastructure, turnpike exit, the list goes on and on. The city cannot afford to address this petition at this time. I personally would favor a 650-square-foot reduction or consideration of 500 square feet after 2025. Until then, I would be adamantly opposed to opening up the entire downtown district to this request. And I also ask you to consider the 3-3 planning board vote on who denied this petition, and therefore, a negative recommendation was made to the city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Up next is Donna Lee Sherburne, 174 McKinney Road.
Good evening. My name is Donna Lee Sherburne. I live at 174 McKinney Road in Saco. My comment tonight is that I was hired by the Ecology School in October of this year as their business manager, and that was due solely to the fact of the growth of this company. Since my inception in October, we've had the privilege to hire nine new employees to our staff, and we have four openings currently. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Sue Littlefield, 171 Simpson Road.
Hi, I'm Sue Littlefield, 171 Simpson Road. I'm here to speak about the turn lane. I read the administrator, Mr. Kenray's summary that was in your packet, and I encourage the council not to support using city funds to pay for the turn lane that the Ecology School has to build. And these are my reasons. First one is financial support was not part of the deal during the long approval process. I'm quite sure that the financial participation of the city in the required turn lane was never seriously discussed, and I know it was not voted on by the council. And as Mr. Kenray stated, city staff does not have the capacity to handle this project. Second one is the applicant's financial capacity, which seems like I'm not agreeing with the previous speaker, but I want to remind you that the school came to the council and was given a modification and a possible forgiveness of their $40,000 a year pilot due to COVID. They did get federal COVID funds, so it sort of hints to me that they don't have the financial capacity. And another thing, the turn lane is only part of the problem at Simpson Road. This really doesn't have to do with the funding part, but turn lane is not going to prevent what has always been one of my primary concerns with the school, that nearly all of Saco's end of the Simpson Road will still be dangerous for pedestrians and possibly even for vehicles, considering that poor visibility and narrow road shoulders exist in many spots. And this issue is eventually going to require the city to make expensive adoptions on the road. And it's even more likely if more residential development occurs up there. And the third point is city priorities. I know that Public Works has a list of priorities, and this isn't on it. We need to make sure that we use these priority lists. And the last thing I'd like to say is I certainly hope that contract zones will come up to the council for a very serious discussion at some point soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Inga Brown, 161 Simpson Road.
Good evening. Inga Brown, 161 Simpson Road. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. To begin, under your new business this evening, Item A, Petition for Zoning -- see my glasses. Petition for zoning text amendment to Chapter 230 for Dimensional Standards. I'd just like to share that I do not support changing the downtown density at this time. The ZORS process that lasted three and a half years, I think we need to honor that. It was a very rigorous process, a lot of time, a lot of investment. And I'd like to potentially see this item come before you later in a much more vetted process for careful consideration. Secondly, I think I was here last week or the week before. The week's blur, forgive me. But council, good evening. Mayor Doyle, good evening. And city administrator, Keenrath, good evening. I'd like to again request that the Contract Zone Ordinance please come on an agenda item, agenda, very soon. There have been multitudes of requests for this, and I think there is a very strong appetite to review the Contract Zone Ordinance and to tighten it and to improve it so that the city moving forward is in a better position with our contract zones that should be used more sparingly. So thank you for, Mayor Doyle, your attention to that forthcoming item, I hope. The turn lane. The city should not entertain a bailout for a Contract Zone private developer for required site plan condition of approval to build an off-site turn lane from Buxton Road to Simpson Road. This sets a very troubling precedent with other Contract Zone recipients who are potentially also looking for financial assistance on a site plan condition of approval. In 2018, the Ecology School met financial capacity in front of the planning board, and that included financial capacity to build the project, to maintain the project, and to build all off-site requirements as well. That includes the turn lane. The Business Partner Initiative, I do not support using this DOT funding mechanism, and I'll tell you why. The profile for those projects do not mesh with the profile and the plans for Simpson Road. There are no plans in the city to add capacity there, to improve that intersection. It has not been identified as a high-crash area, and I know from city staff that using this funding hurts our ability as a city to receive future funding for projects that have been deemed critical, that have been in the pipeline for a long time. So this is a bad process, and I don't support it moving forward. Is that my time, Mayor?
That is your time.
I'd like to just, I'd like to end with just saying, as it stands now, there are too many outstanding issues on Contract Zone compliance with this project, and the city has its hands full with monitoring oversight and does not have the time to monitor another project if you entertain a sub-agreement with the Ecology School on this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Jeff Broshue, 257 Buxton Road.
Good evening. As Mayor said, I'm Jeff Broshue. I reside at 257 Buxton Road. There are several very important items on tonight's agenda, and I'll do my best to try to address my concerns in three minutes. I think, as most of you know, I try to always portray and live my life by following the rules, the laws, the regulations, the standards. In my professional world, we're governed by the National Fire Protection Agency Code that's reviewed every three years. We get our chance to make those changes at a review process, and then they're funneled in. I'll be coming before you, actually, because the city will be looking at adopting the latest code shortly when it gets on an agenda. One of the unique parts of that is that whether we like it or not, we have to live by it. We have to work by it. We have to execute our daily lives to make a living by it. We do have the option of addressing changes, but on a three-year cycle. I would like the entire council to consider the countless hours that go into all of these review process, the zoning board review, the zoning revision review process, our comprehensive plan process, right? They create wonderful documents that we incorporate as our guides and our rules. We need to maintain the integrity of those and get the value that we've invested as a community for that process. Countless hours of volunteers that are involved in those processes accumulate to make those documents, and I do not think we do any justice by rapidly changing them when they haven't even been on the books for a year. There is time for public comment. It's addressed. Consider making a timestamp that when we adopt, or when you adopt, one of those ordinances, that you will not take on any petitions for changes for two, three, five years into that process. I think it would be a great benefit to staff at the planning department that doesn't have, wouldn't have to funnel these. And you're also trying to keep your planning board moving applications through, yet they're stopping to review things that they worked on for a year and a half. Trying to move on to the turn lane. I have great concern about there being any use of city funds to fund a turn lane. Going back to rules and laws, they signed a contract with the city. It's a binding contract, no different than your mortgage for your home or buying a car. You don't change the terms partway through. They came to you. You guys were kind enough to say, hey, you're having some financial difficulties. We're going to look past what you owe us in your annual dues since we lost the taxable value of that land. And to hold on to, or to grab at the last hour that the planning board had said the applicant would work with the city and Department of Transportation to make the notion that they would be paying for that in some financial capacity, I think is a real stretch. On regular occasions, the planning board will tell, an applicant will work with the Parks and Rec Department for the installation of street trees. The applicant will work with the fire department for the installation of a Knox box. The application will work for the code office for the installation of a fire escape. As we saw in last meeting's budget, those departments never have an expense item. They're not sharing the cost. It's understood that they are the regulatory body, the authority having jurisdiction, and the applicant needs to build them to their standards. So with that being said, I hope that you would consider not appropriating any funds from the city budget for that turn lane. Thank you.
Thank you. That is it for those that have signed up. If there's anyone speaking who did not sign up, please come forward and be heard.
Hi, my name is Mikey, and I did sign up, but I signed up late. It was before the Pledge of Allegiance. So my name is Mikey, and for those of you that don't know me, I was on the ZORS committee. I'm currently on the Economic Development Commission, currently on the Long Range Planning Commission, currently on the School Site Search Committee. So I've been around for quite a while. I really don't have an ax to grind anywhere tonight. I think, seeing that you've got several new planning board members, a new planning staff, you would think, and everybody's very busy, I think they've done a pretty stellar job meeting the way we are. But as I remember, when we adopted the new zoning ordinance over a year ago now, I believe, there were some changes that needed to be made because there was some last changes, last-minute changes that got made right before the one that got adopted, namely, some of the stuff in master plan development, and some of the stuff in master plan development also had stuff that was going to carry on to any kind of major multifamily projects that might come down the road. And not that we have one right now, but they're going to be coming. So I guess my point is, is nothing against higher densities, for instance, on an item that you have later tonight, if there's a bonus to the city, like affordable housing, like Portland's got a bonus, Bitterford's got a bonus, but they don't just give it to market rent places. The city gets something out of it. So I think hopefully it'll give us some time to the planning board to get through the rest of this master plan development. And to get through, one of the pieces in the master plan development is to make sure that all your municipal services are taken care of. And we had a draft of 3-8 that was going to go to the council that night, but they decided to vote on, to put into the package, and I would have been pretty happy. I wouldn't be here tonight. That didn't happen. Since then, we've got a new planner and a whole nine yards. And one of the things is in there that we worked real hard with Scarborough and Bitterford and surrounding communities, and I saw in this morning's paper, another project I was looking at in Portland about how they handle their bonuses and to get some affordable housing, the stuff that talks about municipal services, municipal services, fire, police, schools, besides sewers and that type of thing. So I guess my point is, is until we know, and I know I've heard it from Dominic Patry, and I've heard it from Jeremy Ray, that if we had an influx of 50 to 100 kids before we get this school built, and we didn't have a mechanism that says the developer is going to tell us if there's going to be an impact, they're going to come up with a plan to take care of it, and they're going to come up with a way to fund it, then the taxpayers aren't getting nailed with it. So to me, that dovetailing with the other things that have happened, I can remember all the debate we had on 1,500 square foot, at every one of these committees, 1,500,000, something like Westbrook, that doesn't have any schools issues, let's go to nothing, and all these types of things. But I think everybody pretty much agreed, and I know the whole other planning board was pretty much on that 1,500. And so, nothing against the project, but I would like to think that, give the staff some time to work on that, get those changes done. I think you're all doing a great job. I'll sit around and listen for a bit, and thank you for my time. Let me speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Dan Lasky, 23 Skyline Drive, Saco. I had notes here and stuff, but the previous speakers have covered just about everything. I just want to say I agree with everything that Kelly said, Sue Littlefield said, Inga, Jeff Broshue, and Mike Ian. I drove up today by the Simpson Road to kind of take a peek at it as far as the left-hand turn lane. As a taxpayer of the City of Saco, I guess for us, the school around us, I think they do a great job. But as a taxpayer of the City of Saco, I mean, they've, they agreed to, you know, to do what they needed to do to put this, you know, left-hand turn rate is needed. I mean, they're going to have, they're talking about having, you know, charter buses and stuff go through there. And as a taxpayer of the city and the state for the DOT money, I really think that they need to fulfill their agreement. On the square footage for downtown district, the ZORS committee spent three and a half years working on this. I don't want to say, I'd like to see the city, I mean, these people, as other people have just said, they put a lot of time and effort into it. I'm not, you know, super against moving it from 1,500, but we need to, need to look at it and need to prep our sewer system, our school system, and many, many other things before we get there. But again, these previous speakers did a very good, eloquent job of speaking, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further members that would like to speak? Please come forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Jim LaBelle with the Bitterford-Saco Chamber of Commerce. By no means an expert on the left-turn lane or the history. Just wanted to say, the Ecology School, I think we all recognize, a great asset for our area, a great member, really sets us apart in Maine. It's a super facility and great people. My only thought on this, when I had the great opportunity to visit with Drew recently, he was mentioning this, if 112 needs to be safer for all of us, we all use that road. So if the experts have determined that a left-turn lane is needed for all of our safety, that's the type of thing that, you know, I would hope the city can work with the state and the Ecology School to just find a way to get it done, and it benefits us all. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Jane Karen, 264 Lincoln Street in Saco, and I want to thank all the previous speakers. They're very articulate and professional. I appreciate their time. And I agree with Inga Brown, Mike Ian, Sue Littlefield, all of their comments, Dan Lasky. All of these comments concerning the left-hand turn, I think, needs great consideration. The cost to taxpayers is not part of the project. And the 1,500-square-foot downtown needs time to be vetted completely, reviewed, and find out exactly what square footage is the best benefit for city, affordable housing, and so forth. It can't just be a number suggested by a businessperson, and we just go with it. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Moving on from public comment to Item 7, there are no minutes to approve. Consent items and application for solid waste permit, Casella Waste Systems, on page 2 of the packet. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Counselor Johnston, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Brings us to Item 9, Action Items. And up first is A, a final reading, City Code, Chapter 112, General Assistance Program Adoption of Revised MMA General Assistance Ordinance, page 7 in your packet. I think it was assigned to Counselor Archer. Is there a council that's willing to read that into the record? Counselor Gunn, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City of Saco currently uses the general assistance. Ordinance dated August 2019, which was prepared by Maine Municipal Association. MMA has a new General Assistance Ordinance dated September 2021, which contains revisions and updates to state law. The City of Saco hereby ordains and approves the repeal of City Code, Chapter 112 General Assistance Program Ordinance dated August 2019, and adopting the MMA General Assistance Ordinance dated September 2021, with the new revisions and updates to the state law.
Motion's been made by Counselor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Brings us to Item B, a first reading, a comprehensive plan adoption, page 8 in your packet. And that is assigned to Counselor Purdy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After more than a year of data collection, public hearings, and online engagement, and online engagement, the city's consultant has prepared a draft of Saco's updated comprehensive plan. Saco's comprehensive plan establishes the basis for making strategic city policy, project, and budget decisions by articulating a vision for the future and outlining the goals, objectives, and strategies to achieve it. It also provides the rationale and legal support for zoning impact fees and other regulations that guide or restrict development in the community. To facilitate this, the plan articulates goals and strategies that are to be implemented via decisions made by city staff, the planning board, and city council within timeframes which reflect the community's expressed priorities for the future. The planning board forwarded a positive recommendation of the draft plan with changes to the land use map and implementation metric, matrix after holding public hearings on January 18th and February 1st. It ordered that the city council approve the first reading of the proposed comprehensive plan and set the public hearing for March 21st, 2022. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Purdy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Gunn. Discussion? Counselor Berman?
I just really want to acknowledge all the work that the city, various departments, various committees, and the public put into this document. I attended several of the open houses and many of the meetings, and watched some of the priorities emerge over time. There was an incredible amount in engagement from the public, including a lot of youth got involved, which I was particularly happy to see. While I like some of the priorities and policies more than others, I think it's an incredible document that will set us up for success over the long term. And so I really just want to express my appreciation for all the time and energy that went into it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, roll call vote. Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McFail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero. Brings us to Item C, Ecology School Left-Hand Turn Follow-Up from Staff, page 252 in your packet. Bear with me as technology is not working. Okay, so there is no item commentary on this. That is the confusion. There is a memorandum in the packet on page 252. City Administrator Kenrath, do you want to read that?
Well, I don't want to read the entire memo, but I'll open it up with a few comments. We also have a few departments represented here. We have Director Pat Fox and Denise Clovet, who are also involved in this research. But basically, I think most of the people up here are familiar now with the BPI, or Business Partnership Initiative. To be clear, this involves a one-third stake from DOT. They would fund the other two-thirds. They don't care where it comes from, but one proposal is for it to be one-third city, one-third state, and one-third the entity or business. So it could be a one-third, one-third, one-third. It could be a one-third DOT, and the rest of the pie is split up in a different way. The big question, obviously, before this council is, do you want to participate in this? Do you want to go forward with a grant application? And do you want to fund a portion of this project? The other main point that staff is concerned about is the project management and the hiring of an engineering firm. I will say, I did speak with Drew from the Ecology School, who had indicated they were already on board with doing the project management on their own with an outside firm. But that is a major point of staff consideration. We did talk with DOT, and those at DOT who actually work in this program, they did tell us that it does have a promising chance of being funded. That's not a guarantee, but they did tell us it had a promising chance of receiving that one-third share of DOT funding. So in a nutshell, that's the main question before this body, is do you want to fund a portion of this and to what degree? And I think the rest is outlined fairly clearly in the memo. And again, additional questions, if you have them, can also be directed to some of our city staff on hand tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, City Administrator Kenrath. Any questions from the council? Counselor Hatch?
City Administrator Kenrath, just, I want, just a little clarification on the BPI program. Do we get, like, one bite at the apple, and once we get one done, we're not able to access any, access any more funding, or is it?
So this is a little bit different from, the MPI is a different program, where we do have some other city projects in the queue. The BPI, we did one with Hancock Lumber somewhat recently. So no, I believe, and I'll let Denise come up and speak also, I do believe there is, if there's another BPI potential project out there, we could submit another application.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Counselor Hatch?
I, not a question. I just, I just had a couple of comments, if I, if I could. My understanding is that even if the city was not involved in direct funding of this, that there would be a fair amount of staff time that would need to be involved in this, and whether or not there has been any consideration for reimbursement of that as a development fee. And then I'm just going to go on record here in support of what will be my vote, and it will be a negative vote. I really agree with a lot of the public comment that I don't think it is reasonable to expect that the city allocate any taxpayer funding to an improvement that was, in my mind, clearly the responsibility of the developer. I did have a long chat with Drew. I'm a friend of the school, and I like the mission. I like what they do. My Rotary Club has been a big supporter of the school over the years. But I had to suggest to him that I was wearing two hats in the conversation. One is a friend, and one is a counselor who has to be a good steward of our tax, our tax money. So I, I just do not feel this is an appropriate use of taxpayer money. And I also have a little challenge trying to equate this project with the grant requirements for eligibility. I think there's some compelling arguments that it likely does not fit. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to respectfully disagree with my neighbor and fellow Councilman Hatch. To me, the question is about whether the public should help pay for this left-turn lane, and the benefit that the public gets out of it. Ecology School, well, has some, you know, business-like aspects to it. They hire and provide jobs to Saco residents, and thus provide some of the benefits. Is ultimately a nonprofit organization. They exist to educate the public and our kids about ecology, conservation, climate change, farming, help preserve and educate about the rural way of life, as we target, you know, in our rural conservation district. These are benefits that we all benefit from, and the public can support that. And that would be enough to make me want to help, but it's not the only thing. They provide about $40,000 worth of programming to Saco schools each year. There's been some conversation that they couldn't afford to during COVID. I'm not sure that's quite right. It's more that they couldn't physically do it because of remote education. The in-person lessons just didn't work. They're back to providing benefits to Saco schools, the city benefits, and can help them with this cost. They bring positive attention to Saco and our region. They've hosted the mayor. They've hosted the Speaker of the House. They've hosted the governor. They've hosted members of our federal delegation. They've hosted the EPA administrator when they came to look at our wastewater treatment plant. All of this brings value to Saco, value that we all share. In addition, I don't think there's any question that the planning board required the Ecology School to build a left-turn lane. It's pretty clear. What's not clear to me is that the need for the left-turn lane was solely because of, or for the benefit of the Ecology School. Simpson Road is a shortcut to Buckston, one that we recently built a bridge on. I'd be hard-pressed to say if it was the bridge or the school that was driving traffic more. Well, the planning board is well within its rights to require the left-turn lane. It is almost two miles away. The left-turn lane's going to go on an otherwise busy state road. In fact, I'm not sure if the school, residents of Simpson Road, or Buckston, are going to benefit more from the left-turn lane. This too suggests there's a public interest in helping. I'm also not totally sure what the alternative is. As I understand it, the Ecology School simply doesn't have the capacity to build the left-turn lane. If we limit, right, the scope of their work, or shut them down, we lose all the benefits of the Ecology School, but we're still going to need a left-turn lane there. There's still enough traffic to merit it. We'll not have an Ecology School and still be on the hook for left-turn lane. In addition, we've heard that the BPI is likely to be successful. It's promising. To leave state money on the table when we could be using it to solve this problem might seem silly to me. So I fully support the BPI, and I hope we'll have a chance to vote and ask the city to move forward with it. Thank you.
Counselor Purdy?
Thank you. City Administrator Kenrath answered one of my questions to some degree anyway. I know we have the BPI in the works with Hancock Lumber. My question is, our, my question was, are there any other projects in the pipeline that are going to require a BPI with MDOT?
Yeah, I guess on the MPI, MPI side, yes, but the BPI side, I'll let Denise speak also if I'm wrong, but I believe there are no others that we're currently involved with outside of Hancock Lumber.
Director Clovet, welcome.
Thank you. There are no official requests as of late that said. There have been a couple of inquiries, and so that's basically where we're at with that. That doesn't mean they're going to materialize or that their projects merit it. That said, those, both those projects are on Route 1 in a higher-profile, higher-density, higher-traffic area.
Director Clovet, could you explain BPI and MPI for everyone?
To understand the difference?
Yes, thank you.
And then I'll enlist my help with Pat if I miss something. So the BPI is a Business Partnership Initiative, and it's usually a three-way split, 33, 33, 33. That said, there have been some deviations, but at a minimum, DOT will pay 33%, and the other 66% would come from a combination thereof. It's generally for businesses that bring economic development to an area, and a higher-profile area with a lot of density issues and a lot of traffic issues and improvements along major corridors. It's also derived primarily to support areas that are going to, for lack of a better word, catapult more business development, to encourage. For example, the BPI at Hancock was not only just for Hancock Lumber, but it was just to expand the potential for that entire area. And so, and then the municipal partnership initiative are for large projects, primarily intersection and infrastructure, road infrastructure improvements along major corridors, and those are 50/50. So the city would, for lack of a better word, cough up, you know, 50%, and the other 50% would come from, from the Maine Department of Transportation. And then that program, you know, for example, I think Pat has three projects in line, and he can speak more to that, but those are more, again, for larger, larger projects. Both are different pots of money. So Maine DOT has two separate processes for these projects reviewed through the different programs. And, and yes, we did have a conversation with MDOT for, for the BPI component, and there's funding available. Like, the year that we went for the Hancock Lumber, we were, it was highly competitive, and there was just a baseline money left. So every year's different. We don't know who's going to be turning in the program applications for either of those programs. Does that help a little bit?
Thank you.
Also, my understanding from reading the packet is that priority would be given to other municipalities that don't already have a project authorized?
That is, that is correct. And, and, you know, again, they can deviate from that at any time. It just depends on where it's at. For example, we haven't started drawing down on the Hancock Lumber one, and so that's called an active program and project. And so whatever application we turn in, that's going to be weighed against that. And if we have another application, that's a whole different ballgame. So if we're halfway through it, that's, that's a different set of review criteria. It's not impossible. I just want you to know that. It just, it means that, it just depends. For example, if they get 10 other projects from all these communities throughout the state, that puts this project in a different light. But if they only have one, that's a different thing. So we have no idea.
Thank you. This last thing is really more of an observation than a question. Seems to me that where Buckston Road 112 is a, is a state road, that the city and DOT are going to have to be involved to some degree as to whether it's funding or whatever. But the folks from the Ecology School can't just go up there with a handful of shovels and start building a left-hand turn lane. They're going to have to coordinate with MDOT. So just really, just an observation that it's nothing really to do with funding, but MDOT and to some degree the city are going to have to be involved in some way, shape, or form. Thank you.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Sorry, patiently been, been waiting down here. I didn't want to interrupt. But we have no motion before us, so it's a bit out of order for us to be discussing it in the manner we have. Without that motion, I find it a little confusing to determine what it is we're actually being asked to vote on tonight. So there wasn't a motion in the packet. I don't know if there's a counselor that wants to present a motion, and then I'd be able to collect my thoughts on what we're discussing. This seems more like a workshop again. And I don't think that was the intent, but I could be wrong.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston. Counselor Berman?
Sure. I agree with Counselor Johnston, and therefore, I'm happy to move that the council direct the city administrator to engage city staff in entering a BPI on behalf of the Ecology School to create a left-turn lane, and in addition, the city fund one-third of the project.
Motion's been made by Counselor Berman. Is there a second?
I'm going to second it, just so we can have discussion.
Second by Counselor Purdy?
I agree with both Counselors Johnston and Berman. I didn't expect that we were going to have a vote on this tonight. I assumed that this was simply on the agenda for discussion. Maybe it should have been under new business instead of an action item. And frankly, I'm nowhere near ready to make a vote on this yet. I've got, got to think about this a lot more and read some more. That being said, I'll let other folks say whatever they want to say.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Now that we have a question before us, I guess, I mean, I spoke about, you know, my feelings on this previously. I could go over them again, but I'm actually more concerned with what staff has prepared, and I appreciate that. But specifically, you know, we have a motion before us that directs us to move forward with paying one-third. We have no We have no understanding of what that cost is. I'm not really in the habit of writing blank checks. It's concerning that we would. And then additionally, directly, you know, for staff, what's, I mean, obviously, I have experience with previous ones. How much staff time is, is generally involved from either DPW or your department, not just preparing the application, but seeing the project as completed as it's intended to be done? I guess I'm, what I'm looking for is how much are we, you know, how much staff time are we asking you to invest if we do move forward with this?
So I'll take the application part of the question, and Pat will take care of the administration part, because it's more his department that does the administration. As far as my time is concerned, the more complete the application, the applicant along with the city has their information, in other words, studies, cost estimates, you know, exactly what the project's going to entail, that makes my job a lot easier. But I would say probably half a week's worth of work to put in a decent application uninterrupted time, whatever that may look like. And then communication with DOT and, and meeting with them. And so I'd probably say about a week's worth of work to, to be able to do that. The administration piece is a whole different ballgame. You know, my department would be responsible for overseeing, like, the, the payments and the requisitions, but then Pat's department is, you know, in, responsible for overseeing the project, and that's a lot more intensive.
And I guess one of the questions that, you know, Pat would be best to answer this, acquisition of right-of-ways, is that a lengthy process? And would the city be undertaking that? Would it have to be the applicant? And is there, is precedent for that, I guess? And how much involvement are they getting themselves into? And what happens if you can't acquire that right-of-way?
All excellent questions. Not a lot of easy answers on right-of-way acquisition, because you don't know how receptive the abutting properties would be. As of right now, there's no full design. I can't tell you exactly how much acquisition there is. I believe it's just relatively narrow slivers of land. We're not talking like a major realignment of 112, so we're not talking homes or anything like that. But there would, I believe, be some small acquisition along the length of the turn lane. There is an avenue for a developer to work. So this did start, this process did, there's a lot of mixing of programs and information here. So I think it's worth understanding, there is a developer-state agreement that the ecology school had in front of them. There is the ability for a developer to do a, a project on a state road and deal with the state. They pay them, they pay them a sum of money for review and inspection. The state verifies that the acquisition of the property occurred properly and, and that all the property is in place before the improvement can move forward. The reason that stopped is because part of that agreement is that the developer has to put in that agreement that they're going to perform the work, and that they are 100% responsible for the work. So the applicant stopped that process at that point because they did not intend to be 100% responsible for the program. So we administer a lot of MPI projects, municipal partnership initiatives, in our office. Depending on what, the level of involvement and what we would have to do at the Public Works level, and we have a lot in our transportation improvement plan right now, between looking at sidewalk connectivity, looking at Route One improvements, being constantly involved with DOT, and the main turnpike authority. We're about to gain a whole new interchange on Route 112 and exit ramps that have a lot of ripple effects across our infrastructure. We don't have any more staff to carry out our multimillion-dollar capital plan citywide than we did when our capital plan was a total of $65,000. So the number of projects that go across the state engineer, deputy director, and my desk are 10 times what they were a decade ago. So to say that, oh, the staff can be involved in this, I mean, sure, we can set another project off to the side and administer this project over those, but this, this is not in our transportation plan. It's not, it has not been in the works. So the level of involvement you want city staff to have if you move forward with a BPI truly comes down to, as far as the state is concerned, the city is on the hook for everything related to the BPI. The property acquisition, the cost overruns, it all comes down to your legal sub-agreement. If you choose to move forward and expend city funds on this project, you have to have a very robust, strong sub-agreement to say, where does the city line end and the ecology school line begin, and who's picking up all of the overages? If this is an $800,000, $600,000, $800,000 project, if it involves moving six, eight, 10 utility poles that are owned by the, by CMP or our communication companies through town, if there are two or three properties that don't willingly want to relinquish property for this turn lane, and the city is the liable party for that, is, there's a lot that goes with that. So how you structure your sub-agreement if you move forward with a BPI is really what dictates how many hundreds of hours city staff are going to put into this project. I can't stress that enough. That's going to be a very important document, because the state document's going to be very simple. The city is doing this project if you move forward with it. So we, we administer probably over a million dollars' worth of BPIs over the last five to eight years. Things like sidewalk improvements, rebuilds of existing state or state-aid roads that are within mostly the compact area, so the down, the more downtown area that we're in charge of all maintenance on. And we do them, they're, they're a good bang-for-the-buck program for us to work with the state, but they do come with an added level of design, inspection, and reporting versus the local projects that we do.
Thank you. Thank you. I, I think, you know, oftentimes, we, at council, we have things, you know, placed before us without really fully understanding the technical side of things. And clearly, Director Fox, just, you know, to us, maybe we're only talking about a figure, you know, a dollar amount, but in reality, there's, there's a lot more to it after it's approved at council level. Again, that's, that is a, a large concern of mine. You know, the, the other thing, as I stated previously, was, as several speakers in the public mentioned, the precedent of this. You know, we can sit here, and it's not whether or not you like a project. My concern, having participated in hours and hours and hours of planning board meetings, both as liaison and just a member of the public, is that developers come all the time, and that they have restrictions and, and, you know, requirements placed on them. And the understanding is that they're going to bear those costs, both onsite and offsite. This is the same situation. It's the way from beginning to end, it was a part of this contract zone, this agreement, that was the way it was understood by me, by members of the public. I think, I don't intend to speak for city staff, but I think that's what they were probably thinking at the time, too. So here we are, where we already have another BPI in the city, which the way it ended up on the Hancock Lumber's lap, I think was inappropriate. You know, the city basically came to the rescue there. So that left a bad taste in my mouth to begin with. So now we have a similar situation where, hey, you understood that these were costs you were going to bear. Maybe you didn't, but perhaps you should have asked. And, and here we are, asking the citizens of Saco to pick up the cost, when, I don't know about you or the rest of you, but on a daily basis, I have people asking for needs. We all do. We have sidewalks on Ferry Road, we have sidewalks on Jenkins Road, we have sidewalks everywhere. Where does this money all come from? It hasn't been identified. You know, there's nothing in this, in this packet that says this is where these funds could come from. So moving forward without any understanding whatsoever, I mean, I think is highly inappropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Purdy?
Would it be fair to say that this conversation is a little premature until we actually have a engineered plan and an actual cost? Which will, brings me to my second point. I don't want us to trip over our own rules and order of business, where we have a motion on the table, and if it's, if it's voted down, then it can't be brought before the council again for another, until the next new council, which won't happen until after I'm kind of thinking that maybe our best option here might be to table this item. That way, we're not, we're not, I don't know, shooting ourselves in the foot and can't, can't address it later. I think it's a conversation that's worth having, but I also think it's, it's premature without an actual cost. That's all I've got to say.
Counselor Purdy, are you making a motion to table?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail. Hey, roll call vote on the motion to table. Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
No.
Counselor Hatch?
No.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
No.
And the tie-breaking vote is to me, and I vote yes. Motion to table. Ring. City Administrator?
Just to follow, but now, this has been tabled, but I will just say that the city does not have a cost estimate. I think Drew did have some, some potential numbers, but if we're tabling this with the idea of staff coming back and providing a cost number, I don't think that's really in the cards. We do not have a cost estimate. But Drew does have some information that could come back to us next time, but I just want to make that clear at this point, that in the next week, we do not have cost estimates.
Thank you. Moving on to item 10, new business. New business item A is a petition for zoning text amendment to Chapter 230, Dimensional Standards, page 268 in your packet. Mayor Garnum, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Doyle, councilors. Good evening, members of the public. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Jason Garnum, Saco City Planner. I am here to introduce a petition that was submitted by Alex Fabish, owner of the property located at 63 Storer Street. Mr. Fabish submitted a request to amend Table 4-1 of Chapter 230, Section 4-1 of the zoning ordinance, to reduce the minimum lot area required per dwelling unit in downtown zoning districts. The zoning ordinance currently specifies that 1,500 square feet are required per dwelling unit in downtown zones. Mr. Fabish's application was to lower that to 650 square feet. However, Mr. Fabish has a, a developed property with a vacant commercial space on the ground floor that he specifically is, is hoping to convert to residential units. And based on our calculation in the planning office, we, we do believe that 850 square feet would work to achieve his aims. But of course, this, this is an amendment to change the zoning for downtown district-wide. It's not specific to his property. So this petition was reviewed by the planning board at its January 4 and February 2 meetings. Staff made recommendations, looking at various scenarios, for lowering the, the number of square feet of a lot per unit required in downtown zones, and looked at neighboring jurisdictions and so on, and recommended a reduction. However, as noted earlier this evening by some members of the audience, the planning board did result in a split vote. That was, they voted three to three on that measure to lower it to 650 square feet specifically, which according to the ordinance is a result of a negative recommendation. So that's a summary. I, I will confess that Assistant Planner Molly Kirchhoff did most of the work that you saw in your packet and presented this to the board, so my knowledge of this is kind of superficial. But I did, at the very least, want to, want to present a staff perspective on this at a broad level. I did want to say that, that first of all, I, I can appreciate that a lot of work went into the fairly recent zoning ordinance update. I know how much work goes into writing even a small section of zoning. So to produce one from scratch with, even with the help of a consultant, I know took a lot of work. But I also do want to say that the, the very purpose of zoning as a tool is to implement your comprehensive plan. Now, I know we are in the process of adopting a new comprehensive plan, and you also have a comp plan that was last adopted in 2011 and updated in 2018. And looking at both the 2018 update and the current draft plan, there are a number of policies and strategies that expressly support and encourage lowering the square foot of land required per unit in areas where public utilities and services are currently provided. I'll read a few of those to you, just, just so that they're on the record. In the current draft plan, we have Implementation Strategy 3.1C. That's actually conveniently on page 99 in your packet, because of course, that draft comprehensive plan is in front of you tonight. That strategy says, "Decrease minimum lot size per dwelling unit in areas with existing public water and sewer to allow for smaller lots conducive to starter home construction." Strategy 3.2B says, "Allow for more multifamily and attached single-family townhouse development in designated growth areas." The townhouse was in brackets. And one of the bullet point strategies under that is, "Review minimum lot size per dwelling unit requirements." That's on page 101 of your packet. Similar, but not exactly the same, 3.1F, "evaluate potential incentives for residential improvements that add certain types of dwelling units in growth areas," such as, this is where it's a little different, "converting vacant upper floors and buildings on Main Street into housing." Now, this is not an upper floor on Main Street, I recognize that, but this is similar in that it's a formerly commercial space that is no longer marketable as commercial space because essentially of a decline in the retail market for subprime locations, such as Mr. Fabish's property. Going to the 2018 comprehensive plan, which is the update to the comprehensive plan that is currently adopted, we have Housing Policy Number 7, which states, "Consider relaxing parking standards and certain other dimensionally-related regulations, including density, governing housing development in the downtown and certain downtown neighborhoods." We have Housing Policy 2, which says, "Explore alternative ways to introduce additional housing in the downtown and downtown neighborhoods." And last, we have Land Use Policy Number 1. "The city will evaluate and encourage higher densities in the downtown area through support of smaller unit sizes or by moving toward no density requirements at all." So those are what your policies say. I realize that policy and action are not always the same. Many of you have noted that yourselves in previous presentations, but as your planner, I, I would be remiss if I did not let you know that that is what is in your, your policy That concludes my presentation. I do believe Mr. Fabish is here, so I don't, being a new business item, I don't know if you ordinarily request input from them, but I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. City Planner Garnum, thank you for that eloquent explanation of our comp plan, current and future. I don't think, in, in the discussions that I've had with myself and with constituents, I don't, I don't think that there is any argument that increasing density in the downtown district is a bad idea. I think we all think it's a good idea. I think it's the method at which we get there. And a comp plan, as I understand it, is not something we approve today and implement tomorrow. That it takes time, it takes a process, and it takes engagement from staff It takes a process, and it takes engagement from staff to help us put together a good action plan. What disturbs me a little bit is that we're contemplating letting one property owner's needs accelerate the process. And for me, that's just a bad idea. And so what I would prefer to see happen is that if, in fact, the hard work of the Zoor's Committee, and I witnessed a lot of that, hard work that got us to 1,500 square feet, if there's a collective agreement amongst many people, not one property owner, but many people, preferably people in the downtown district, that says, hey, you know, maybe 1,500 is too high. Maybe we drop it down, I don't even have a number in my head, but drop it down to some level where everybody agrees it's a good idea, everybody stops for a moment and does the math and calculates the impact of, in this case, you're more than doubling the density capability of a property. We have to think beyond the importance of the density improvement to infrastructure impacts and make sure that when we do make that decision, that it's well-vetted and it's reasonable. And so from my perspective, this is what I find disconcerting about this request. I would have preferred to have a petition from 100 people who own property in the downtown district come up and say, hey, we'd like you to reconsider this and reconsider it appropriately. You're currently going through a master plan development review of the Paulan Road District, okay? Kudos, because we've been waiting for a long time for that, where this issue is likely to come up there. And why don't we use that same forum to, if it's appropriate, to reconsider the density levels that we placed on the downtown district, knowing that there will be a lot of voices, there will be public hearings, there will be ample opportunity for people to engage, and we don't let one property owner push us in this direction without figuring out all the ramifications. So this is the problem I'm having with this particular request. I find it very interesting, very, very interesting. I was at that planning board meeting, as you know, and we had a three-three split vote. And two of the three dissenting votes, which meant these were the two of the three people who did not want to change from 1,500 to 650, were the only two remaining planning board members who were part of the Zoor's process. The rest of them were all newly appointed. Very little institutional history, not their fault, they knew, but two of the three dissenting votes came from the two folks who were part of the process. In fact, I listened to the recording today because I just wanted to make sure I had my facts straight. And if you indulge me here a minute, I'm going to find the quote here, and it came from both Board Member Clark and Acting Chair Provencal. Matt basically said, if I'm going to paraphrase here, that he didn't want to see any wholesale changes to something that was so well-vetted over a fairly lengthy period of time. He had a lot of respect for the work that went into that number. Didn't, now, he said he would consider a modification, but he wanted it to go back through the appropriate process, and that was the similar indication that Member Clark said. I also heard Member Biggs make a comment, which I found pretty interesting, because if you recall, he asked, I'm going to find it here, yeah, during the February 1 meeting, Planning Board Member Biggs correctly suggested that it would be unlikely to see a massive immediate transition to increased density in the downtown district. And I think he's right. So if that's correct, where's the sense of urgency here? I don't think there is any. And so let's do this right. Let's go back through the process, and if it comes back to the council fully vetted, I'm going to feel a lot better about that and voting for it, because I certainly do not support this petition the way it's been brought before us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Purdy?
Thank you. Where to begin? First of all, I can understand Mr. Fabish's frustration. He owns a building that previously had 12 apartments and now is not zoned for 12 apartments. But I'm uncomfortable changing the zoning for an entire district for one property. And I think I agree with Council Hatch in that this is something that really needs to be looked at. I mean, the comp plans suggest that we should have a higher density in downtown, and I agree with that, but... Lost my train of thought, sorry. As I said, I'm uncomfortable changing it for one property that's, I think, honestly, I think this is the, this is the exact situation that contract zones are meant for. And yes, I know Mr. Fabish brought a, applied for a contract zone previously that came with a negative recommendation, and it came with a negative recommendation because of the four items that the planning board had to vote on. The one that, the first one, the uniqueness of the property failed. And the, I'm just going to say, and I'm trying to look at this from all different angles here, I will say that I could argue that the uniqueness of the property lies in the fact that it used to have 12 apartments and now, because of zoning changes, is not zoned for that. But that being said, I think part of the conversation when the contract zone was brought up before was parking, and I know parking was a part of the conversation during the planning board meeting. We haven't quite gotten through any of that yet. So right now, I'd have to say that I'd be against changing the zone for the whole district, but I'm, at this point, I think in the future, it's something that needs to be done, but I think we need to go through the proper process. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. Before I comment, in the interest of transparency, I will have to state that I am in the butter, and I also own property and manage properties in the downtown zone. I don't view that as conflict, but I'd ask that council make that determination before I participate.
Any objection to Councilor Johnston participating in the discussion? No objection?
Thank you. As I've stated previously on this, I'm supportive of this change. I do share the same concern of Councilor Hatch when it comes to process. When this came before us this past summer, I believe, I kind of led that charge as far as this should be a zoning amendment. I had hoped that it would come down from council, not so much an applicant, because it does give off that perception that we're doing this for an individual property owner, when in actuality, it doesn't affect the entirety of the zone. As in the butter, I received those notifications within 250 feet, I believe, but the downtown is much larger than that, and there's several property owners that weren't noticed and have no understanding that this conversation is occurring. So that in itself is concerning to me, because again, you need buy-in by all. What I personally believe is right, clearly, we had members of the audience tonight that feel otherwise, and the whole point of that zoning revision was to get as much buy-in as possible, and it's ultimately why I made the suggestion at the time to just go back to the 1,500 square foot requirement, because we couldn't come to consensus in the short amount of time that we had to wrap up the zoning ordinance. It was always something that I viewed as coming back to council. There's other items that go hand in hand with it, like the question of parking. We have suggestions in comp plan after comp plan saying, oh, we need to relax the parking standard. Well, as a member of the downtown, I can tell you that there's a parking crunch as is. So without having a parking plan going forward, it makes little sense to me to actually move forward with a suggestion that is a high-level suggestion that's being suggested nationwide all over. So it's, again, I view this, along with the parking, we need to have a strategic plan for it before we move forward with making these amendments, and unfortunately, I feel honestly terrible for Mr. Fabish here, because he's kind of wasted another six or seven months since last summer. And I'm not placing blame on anybody there. If anything, maybe I should take ownership, because I probably should have been more direct with city staff and suggest that we start having workshops at the council level. So I totally apologize for that, and I'll try to do better going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Berman?
Yeah, I really appreciate Councilor Johnston's comments. I also favor this change in general. I think densifying downtown is important. I think council is the place to do it. If we do see this again soon, I would like to see consideration of the larger picture and how this would affect other things, utilities, the sewer, the school, how it would affect parking and be part of a more comprehensive vision for the changes that are going to be instituted in the downtown district. You know, it's new business now. I don't know if and when it'll reappear on the agenda, but if so, I'm generally supportive, but would like to see those things.
Planner Garnum, in your years of experience in planning and your expertise level, have you encountered situations across Maine, here in Saco, and across Maine, and actually maybe even across the country? There's a housing crunch, a housing shortage?
I think that's hardly news at this point, Mayor Doyle, that there is a nationwide housing shortage.
Thank you. And not sure if you were following the news, but Speaker Fecto from our neighboring community offered a bill, LD 2003, which was introduced and had a public hearing at the legislature today on affordable housing and different housing and planning initiatives statewide. Were you familiar with that?
I'm not familiar with that specific piece of legislation, but I am aware that the state legislature did just publish a housing set of strategies, and among them, thank you for bringing it to my recollection, because I did bring this up during one of the planning board meetings, that there are, there's specific recommendations for the state legislature to consider devising statutes requiring municipalities to lower their density requirements in growth areas. Among other measures, many other.
And shortly thereafter, the new zoning ordinance was passed, did the council not change some of that zoning, in particular, a couple of parcels up on Route 5 and maybe one right down here on Main Street, to put them into different zones than maybe the Zoor's had them in when they created the maps in the Zoor's document?
Of course, Mayor Doyle. It is customary and fair for there to be a process for property owners and business owners within the community to petition to change zoning.
And did we not approve a contract zone for a developer that owns businesses above what used to be Champion Sports Bar, which is now a law office? It's been many things over the years, but for apartments on Main Street?
That one, I'm not familiar with, Mayor Doyle. That was before my time, I think.
146 Main Street.
146 Main Street.
146 Main. Rings a bell, but forgive me, I don't know about it.
The answer is yes.
So it's kind of, if you take all those into account, along with what you're saying as part of the comprehensive plan, that this petition, whether it's being brought by one individual or being brought by multiple individuals, fits within the comprehensive plan of 2011, 2018, and perhaps even 2021 or '22 upon final adoption.
That's my perspective, Mayor Doyle, yes. This petition is very clearly supported by policy documents that have been adopted by this council and previous councils.
In your, as you were preparing the documents here, did you get a chance to look at the 2011 comp plan?
I did, but it was not today, so...
So if you look back to the documents that created the 2011 comp plan, I'm sure you'll find that at that time, Saco had approximately 4,000 students. And then I think you can speak clearly on the current comp plan in front of you, that Saco has about 2,100 students now. That's a significant declining enrollment over the past 10 years. Would you say that?
It is, and I did notice, too, several times, that the, both the current draft, 2022 to 2034 comp plan generally summarizes or forecasts declining, continued declining enrollment in local schools, but that the appendices have really a lot of substantive data supporting that. Now, anytime you get into forecasting, things are very uncertain. My crystal ball is no better than his or yours or theirs, for sure, but that is what isn't forecasted in those documents.
It's a best guess based on certain parameters and certain facts, right?
Based on current trends and looking at the demographic composition of both Saco and more broadly nearby communities, the trends for migration and demographic change in Maine.
Thank you. Those are all the questions I have. Councilor Hatch?
Yes, I failed to talk a little bit about this whole concept of affordable housing, and I seem, it seems to me that what's getting lost in the discussion here is we're talking density, not unit size. And if we're going to potentially place many more units within the same building land footprint, in my mind, this does not equate to affordable housing, as many have suggested. It's simply a potential for smaller-sized units at a price at whatever the market will bear, because we are placing, this is not a bonus program. We're not forcing the developer to create affordable units. What we're trying to do is shrink the unit, so the rent is less, likely driving the cost of housing per square foot up as property owners try to maximize the return on their investment. And then they're going to appeal to folks who can only afford smaller market units, somewhat regardless of family size. Planning Board Member Leary, in her comments, justifiably reminded the planning board that smaller units do not guarantee fewer children. Fair housing standards preclude that. So adequately sized shelter is a basic human need. Making shelter space smaller seems somewhat counterintuitive to me, and as housing gets more expensive, folks are going to have to do the best they can with whatever size unit is available to them. So until we get into a public-private partnership where true affordable housing can be garnered, and I think we were comparing apples to oranges here in this discussion with this property, because we were bringing in the bonus density program from our neighboring city, which has an affordable contractual, as I understand it anyways, a contractual affordable housing component in it, we're not going to, we're not going to address this affordable housing need until we're ready to make that step. So I just wanted to get that, and by the way, I'm a proponent of affordable housing. We've been talking about this for 35 years. We've been talking about this for 35 years in the city, and I'm a proponent of putting together action plans that can deal with this, but I'm not sure this kind of effort is going to get us what we want.
Thank you. Counselor Berman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I find myself in the unviable position of trying to disagree with Counselor Hatch twice in one meeting. I'm also a proponent of affordable housing, and I don't pretend like this project is seeking affordable housing in the sense that we mean it. But I do believe that the housing crisis is fundamentally a supply and demand problem. And by increasing housing, we are increasing supply, which will help meet the demand and reduce some of the pressure on housing costs. Furthermore, you referenced some of the future casting that we've seen, and we've seen, I think, three sets of future casting in mine now, I don't know, 16 or 18 months on council. We had some economic development consultants. We've had some comprehensive plan consultants, and now we've had some school construction consultants. And they've all told us the same thing, that the demographics of Saco are going to shift. They're going to shift away from traditional family units with a mom, a dad, and kids, and they're going to move towards an aging population and a young, childless, professional population. And all of those people are going to demand smaller housing located in downtown in what they call livable communities, where they can walk and bike and otherwise access services that are nearby. Now, it's possible that the future looks different than what these future forecasters suggest, but I think it would be very irresponsible of us to assume that we know better than the professionals who are paid to do this. They're not merely looking into a crystal ball. They're looking at traditional patterns of growth rates, right, recent births, migration patterns, economic forecasts, and others to make these determinations. Building smaller, we will need smaller housing in the coming decades. Demand will be there. It's what people will want, and this is a way to do it. So I hope, if this discussion doesn't carry in this moment, I hope discussions like it will carry in the future, because I think this is where we're going, and we're going to need a plan to get there.
Counselor McPhail, then Counselor Johnston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Although most people know, as I am, an advocate of the downtown district, I am supportive of increasing the density, just as Counselor Johnson, it's no secret that he and I both support most efforts down there. My problem with this is that, yes, increasing the density in the downtown is part of the comprehensive plan, but so is improving parking and traffic. So which one do we prioritize? How can we increase the density now when we haven't addressed the other issues first? And the concerns or the questions of reducing and relaxing the parking standards only increases that twofold. I do not want to see more residential parking on the street, which then prevents people from visiting our businesses in the downtown. More parking that's there, less parking for the residents that can stop in and want to go shopping or go out to eat. So I think that working on the density is kind of putting the cart before the horse at this point, until we can address the other two major issues being traffic and parking. And we have just completed in our work, not completed, but in the finalization processes of the parking, downtown parking standards and review that we've gone through. So until we have the full results of that and look at ways to improve, at this point in time, this is not something I do support until we can look at the other issues first.
Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. So, I mean, when we addressed this during the Zores process, and again, when this quest came back this summer for the contract zone, I spent a lot of time going through the actual properties. And while I always knew, having lived there, that the densities are far greater presently, as is, than they're laid out in the zoning ordinance, it was really, you know, eye-opening to actually look at properties and realize how little you can do with them. And again, that's largely why I support this, because I look at, you know, properties like this individual's, properties I own, that you currently or in my family, there's very little you can do with them, as is. And without that density, you will not see investment. So time and time again, you see that in the comp plan about investing in the downtown. And from a financial standpoint, I can tell you, you will not be able to get enough units under the current zoning to be able to make it, or it's cost prohibitive. You just won't get the investment. So that's the challenge we have here. And as I was sitting here, and I may complicate this matter, but I was thinking, you know, I don't want to just see this go away and then spend another eight months waiting for something to come to fruition. So is it possible to do like a density overlay within the downtown? And so you take out what I would consider the core downtown that is already, as you've laid out in your packet previously and the information I have, where you already are seeing far greater densities? I mean, the building directly next door to Mr. Fabbish here, by my count, there's about 300 square foot that's allowed in that 40-some-odd units. This is far less. So is that something that we could potentially look at, where you just not hone in on one individual property or the entirety of the zone, but say, areas around Store Street and Pleasant Street or Water Street, we already see those high densities, and then put like an overlay or a bonus densities in those areas, then we can address the totality of the zone at a later day?
Well, I think one of the challenges of that, Counselor Johnston, is, you know, when we look at a building from the street, we can see that it has a formal footprint. It's X feet tall, and it occupies such a percent of the site, but we don't know, we don't often know whether there's one unit in it or 20, unless they've had a recent building permit. Perhaps there may be data with the assessor's office or something, but I don't really know how many, you know, housing units. And that's, the flip side of that same argument is one of the things I did want to add, is that even proposals to increase the number of units on a specific property still have to go through site plan review, conditional use review. They still have to demonstrate that there's adequate off-street parking, you know, they have to meet all those requirements for utilities and address impacts of their projects. But as far as, if I'm understanding you correctly, I think you're asking if we can in some way analyze what the potential impact...
I've done that.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, is it possible to basically, we already, or at least I have a pretty good understanding of what the current densities are, can you draw a circle on the map as an overlay to the downtown and say, in that area, you're allowed X amount of units per square foot in the lot size?
Oh, using the zoning map?
Yeah.
Of course.
As an overlay. So we're not just zoning in on that one property, or we're just taking an area that already has high densities. I mean, that entire neighborhood, all of Water Street, you have 300 units just on Water Street alone. So I guess that's the challenge I've heard from others, because again, I'm supportive of this. But you get into those other neighborhoods, say Cross Street, which is in the downtown zone, you have largely single-family, two-family homes, and so that's where, you know, you run into people not necessarily wanting five units on their street now or what have you, particularly on a one-way street like Cross Street that doesn't have adequate parking to begin with. So is there just another way to look at this, I guess, is what I'm asking, and I can talk to you offline about it.
Yeah, we can try. We can throw something together and communicate online outside of the meeting.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this item? Planner Garnum, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Moving on to item 11, administrative updates. City Administrator Canrath?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Starting with the senior tax program, we've seen very strong participation in our new program this year, more than doubling the number of participants over last year, which is a tremendous success. I just want to thank in particular two staff people who worked pretty hard on this, in addition to the outside support we had. But Deputy Director of Finance, Megan Levine, has done a tremendous job on this and also continues to help a number of seniors with the application through the process. And also Executive Assistant, Tori Gorman, has been essential in getting this new program off the ground. So we've more than doubled over last year, and so we're helping a lot more people, obviously, than we were previously with this new program. So thank you to all, and it's been a great success. I'd like to welcome a couple of new hires to the city in our police department. Shannon Benly is our new PD, Community Outreach and Mental Health Worker, and Michael Spencer is a new police patrol officer. So welcome to both of them, and we hope you have a lot of success here with the city of Saco. I want to recognize some other city staff milestones. Riley Cobb in our Water Resources Recovery Department recently completed a multi-year Management Candidate School certificate. So Riley continues to build his career with the city WRRD, and we want to congratulate him for his advancement in the profession and all he does here at Saco WRRD. Also, Jonathan Kamier in our Public Works Department was recently promoted to light equipment operator, so congratulations to him. In addition, we have one more, long-term retirement. I just wanted to recognize Ron Lavoy in our Parks and Recreation Department, recently retired after 20 years of service with the city, and we want to thank him for all of his years of dedication and commitment to our staff and residents, and wish him a very happy and healthy retirement. A reminder again, Mary's Walk, we'll be back this year in person, held on March 20th in the City of Saco Wellness Program, is covering the registration fee for the first 20 city employees who would like to participate in the event. And participants can choose from either the 5K Run or Walk. Please contact Amelia Meyer in Parks and Rec if you have any further questions. An update from our assessing department, they this spring are working on the paper streets issue that came before this council with the Gull Avenue item that we saw a couple of months ago, and they're working to notify impacted property owners to discuss the situation with them and tax their properties accordingly, and I'll give you further updates as that process moves along. Lastly, we have a WRRD bid solicitation. The city of Saco was soliciting bids for a replacement slab top to a wet well at the Windy Point Pump Station and a replacement of a slab top to the valve pit at the Factory Island Pump Station. Bids must be submitted on the bid response form in a sealed envelope marked Windy Point and Factory Island. Bids will be accepted until 1:00 p.m. on Tuesday, April 19th, at the finance office located here at City Hall, and there will be a public opening of all bids at that time. Any questions, please refer them to Stacy Thompson in WRRD by calling 207-282-3564. Lastly, I just wanted to note for everyone, pardon our appearance, we are painting the chamber this week, and that should be done hopefully by our next meetings. We'll have a fresh coat of paint, and we're also going to be updating the somewhat faded drapes that you see also. So we'll have a fresh new chamber in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for City Administrator Canrath? Okay, moving on to item 12, council discussion and comment. Council discussion and comment tonight? Okay, moving on to item 13, is there a motion to enter into executive session? We will not need item C tonight. Item C is not ready. Counselor Berman?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Be it ordered that the city council enter into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405.6, for Purpose E, consultation with attorney.
Motion's been made by Counselor Berman. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Hatch, to enter into executive session, discussion, roll call, vote. Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0 to enter executive session at 8:13 p.m. There'll be a five-minute recess, and we'll meet downstairs in the conference room, downstairs in the conference room after a five-minute recess.
Okay, we're back from executive session. Is there a motion to enter, or excuse me, to exit executive session?
So moved.
Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Councilor Berman, any discussion? Roll call, vote to exit. Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero at eight forty-three. Item fourteen, there's no report from executive session. Brings us to item fifteen, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
That's Councilor Johnston. Thank you. Second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Purdy. Any discussion? Roll call, vote. Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. To adjourn at eight forty-four. Have a wonderful evening, everyone.